The order, okay? Okay, it's six o'clock and let do the call to order. And our brand new city secretary is going to do invocation.
You're already thinking for the state, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of this great community. Got our hearts, got our minds in a spirit of fairness and the truth. Give us the peace and compassion, all understanding. Help us to listen and understand one another. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our life. Help us to work together and encourage each other. Help us to lead our people with love in our hearts. Bless this community and bless this country as a whole in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Kathy. All stand. I apologize for this, but I'm feeling pretty punk. You can, you can Google that, but I, I apologize. Anyhow, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
We just did the flag.
We did it, Eric.
I, I'm sorry, the dogs were, the dogs were barking. I, I apologize. Okay, public comments, anyone?
No, Mayor Proton, we don't have anyone signed up under public comments.
Okay, if, if we're, if we're virtual, can we make a public, quick public comment?
Sure.
Okay, I, I'm turning off my attorney, city attorney hat and turning on my resident hat. On the agenda item concerning the waste services garbage in particular, I should say. I hope that the council will consider the brush removal option. I think it would be a great, something great for the residents to have. Thank you. Okay, I'm taking off the, the citizen hat and putting on the attorney hat. Thank you.
I sure want to know what hat that is, Jason.
Any hat that will cover my receding hairline.
No, and I agree with you. We, we can adjust this thing from what I've been told, just so you know. You know, we can start it one way and, and, and adjust it. I, I completely agree with you on the brush. And, but, you know. It does, it, it doesn't have to be perfect day one, right?
Yep.
So that's just my opinion. But I also have, I, I live with three females, two female dogs and one female wife and no one listens to me. So that's, that's why I've been a good acting mayor, I guess.
Excuse me, Mayor Proton. Can you hear me?
Okay, say it again.
Moment, Mayor Proton, were you wanting to speak under citizen communication? Did I understand you all wanted to speak?
Yes.
Okay, can you please?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, we do have one under citizen communication, Mayor Proton.
Okay.
Just bear with us for just a moment.
The sound is not being very good tonight. The sound is not good tonight. Your audio is bad.
So that's what I said, should we get closer into the microphone?
We have Mr. David and Sylvia Dixon, is that correct? He's here to speak under citizen communication regarding police and sewer odors.
So first, I'd like to introduce my wife Sylvia and myself, David, we're brand new residents in Palm Valley. Excited to be here. Promise you, this would be way less than it's been. The item with police is actually Councilwoman Baker has kind of involved in that as well. Our Chief Garcia, pleased to see you live in person. Been an interesting thing developed with the movers that we hired to move us here before again. Basically, they tried to execute a little shake down on us for almost $3,000 additional for transfer fee, saying that they couldn't get a big truck into Palm Valley due to signs and ordinances that they hadn't even available themselves of. So, long story as short as possible, both Councilwoman Baker and Chief Garcia notably went on record in writing to honor behalf to the parties, members that there were exceptions made for large moving vehicles. There are no problems, they wouldn't be issued any citations. And so all that came off without a hitch and we're grateful for that. Trust me, that was a, a big deal for us. And then the thing on sewer odors, we're brand new in the community, like I said, so we don't know what might be normal or what might be abnormal. You know, it's a very small area. We do the city bus, they're all waste management. And so I'm guessing that at times depending on weather and breezes, directions and all that, that there might be some of this, but maybe somebody can tell me if you expect that on a normal cool afternoon when the windows open. Being an Oregon guy, I was enjoying the cool weather the last few days. And yeah, it's rather unpleasant. So I don't know if there's something wrong that can be addressed in our micro neighborhood or if this is just something that happens from time to time on the way to there. But what is, what is your address? 1900 Tangelo, got corner of Tangelo and Palm Valley.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Okay, I'm, I'm kind of blind right now and I'm sorry. So are we ready to move on to agenda item five? Are we, are we ready to move on to agenda item five?
Yes, we are.
Yes. Okay, so discussion, possible action to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 18th, 2022. Any comments?
I make a motion that we table the minutes to the next meeting. The approval of the minutes.
Did you hear that, Eric?
Eric, we got a motion to table and second the, the approval of a minute of the last meeting.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm in ill health and, and deaf and now I'm blind, so. For agenda item five, do we have a motion?
Have a motion to table and, and we have a second.
Okay, all, all in favor, I? All opposed, same sign. So that passed. Item six, agenda item six. Possible action regarding bonus pay for part-time employees and newly hired employees. Any discussion?
I make a motion to approve the bonus paid for part-time employees and for newly hired employees. For a second?
I second it. To come out of city funds.
To come out of city funds. I make a motion regarding bonus pay for part-time employees and newly hired employees to come out of city funds.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, I? All opposed, same sign. Passed. I, agenda item seven, discussion, possible action to approve contract between the city of Palm Valley and Waste Connections for garbage services and authorize the mayor pro tem or his designated to sign the contract.
I just want to make
Discussions.
I want to make a single thing with what Jason made did with his resident hat versus the lawyer hat. We have taught to waste connections and they have said that they would amend it. They, we can get started on the contract now and it can make an amendment for brush pickup as we see fit.
That, that sounds great. I mean, they're a local company and they're the ones that stood up, you know, immediately for us and, and Councilman Lucio got several great recommendations. So I, I have no issue with that at all. Are we ready with an ordinance? That's the only question I have.
I got a couple of questions, Eric.
As far as the ordinance goes, it's going to depend on what services are the council agrees to, to, that are going to be provided by the, by the servicer. And of course, that's why we have the regular one and the brush one option. I don't think the contract starts until January 23rd, if I want to say. That's when service would start somewhere in there. So if, if the council approves one or the other of contracts, then, then that would get signed and then an ordinance would be crafted based on the council's election. And then it would be, that ordinance would be approved in this, at the December meeting.
Okay, and, and it's going to be 100% right of, of our residents, not 50% now that are paying?
Yes.
I mean, are we, are we ready to build?
Everybody's in.
Yes, and also it starts January 1st. The contract starts.
Okay. A way of a motion on that.
Where will the individual?
Where are the individual citizens going to place that brush? What, what, what's, what's, what's that involved?
So the amendment that if we decide to go with a brush, it would be in people's front yard.
Okay, so just right up there by the curb?
Yeah, it'll be right up there.
Okay, okay, something similar to what they, yes, been doing. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, I make a motion that has this, the word, we need special wording on this, or?
Can you read it from here?
Hold on a second.
We have a second?
Wait, what's, what's the either or here?
I make a motion
Wait. For garbage services as well as brush pickup and authorize the mayor pro tem to sign the contract.
Or his designate.
Or his designate.
Okay, all in favor?
I second.
You didn't get a second vote, yeah.
Sorry.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
I second the motion.
All in favor? All opposed? Passed. Item eight, Jason, take your lawyer hat off, okay?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll put my, my fingers in my ears.
Discussion, possible action to approve or renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and Jason Mann for legal services. Any discussion?
I just have one thing to say, and this really isn't directed towards one person in particular. But as, as a, as a council, I just wanted to remind us of the conflict of interest. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if an advisory board member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on an agenda item. And this is read at every art city of Harlingen meeting before the meeting. So I just think that that's important when we consider anything regarding the city or city employees.
Eric?
I, I have, I have no issue with adding that to every single meeting, okay? So, I mean, I, I don't have any conflicts of interest. Well, a cou- a couple at home, but other than that, I have no problem with adding that to every single package. So Kathy, make it happen.
So I make a motion to approve and renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and Jason Mann for legal services.
Do we have a second?
From Jerry Wade.
All in favor? All opposed? So that's passed. Agenda item nine, discussion, possible action to approve and/or renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and Luis Ramos for building inspection services. Any discussion?
The only thing I want to add to this is that when he does the, the, the permits for the city, did he do it on his own time and he not wear? Because he is an employee of the city of Harlingen and I don't want him wearing a city of Harlingen shirt while he's walking around doing city inspections for us. So I just want to have that, we can talk to him.
Well, let's, let's buy him a city of Palm Valley shirt and he can Okay, good. That's fine. Let, let, let him know that's what we want to make sure he does is take his Harlingen shirt off and put Palm Valley shirt on. I mean, I think he's a fair guy. I haven't always agreed with everything he did, but you know, who, who agrees with everything I do, right? So.
I make a motion to I make a motion to approve and renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and Luis Ramos for the building inspection services.
Thank you, Gil.
I second it.
All, all approve? All, all in? And all opposed? Passed. Agenda item 10, discussion, possible action to approve and/or renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and top direct marketing, John Top for marketing services.
I knew that we do this newsletter in-house and that we save taxpayers $9,000 a year.
Okay, but the way this is written
Not the way it's read here.
The way it's written, it says discussion, possible action to approve or renew.
So I
So, so your motion?
Is to not approve and to save the taxpayers $9,000.
Okay, Jason, how do we? If the council's decision
A pardon, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, I think we, if the motion that has been proffered is, as, as the, the first, the motion here is seconded and voted on, then we would merely send that 30-day letter of termination of the contract. Because that's a, it's, it's a contract that can be terminated at will with 30 days notice.
By either party, right?
Yes.
Okay, what? What, what's the council's will?
You need a second.
I just moved that we not renew it, that we save the taxpayer money, the $9,000 a year. That's my motion.
Is it, and is that motion good, Jason?
Well, there's extra stuff on there, but basically the motion is to not renew. I would think you would not renew by sending termination letter would be a more effective motion to pro offer.
Okay, so our council can I, just simple question, can I ask, is our council's will to not renew this?
I just have some questions here. So, you know, basically, I'm getting the feeling that this is about going on paperless and stuff. And I, you know, that this is one thing, but I, I, I'm not ready for the city to go paperless entirely as far as newsletter.
It's, it's not.
Well, in the last meeting, in the last meeting, you know, you had that IT guy talking, but you know what? You didn't make any provisions in that last meeting for how we were gonna, you know, that we were going to continue to a certain extent. I would think that, that if we, if we, if we, you know, if people register for, for their, their text and stuff like that, we just scratch them off the newsletter and, and little by little, we start weeding them out.
That, that's our plan. But what my, my recommendation is, is just to do until we get to that point is to eliminate this because it's already
But I'm, I'm talking to you about something else because, because
No, we agree.
And because we didn't have it covered in the last meeting. So we, you talked, no, you didn't.
We asked
IG didn't know who, who was going to do what or anything. All he was going to do was, 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 you know, register these, these participants and stuff like that, but we didn't have anything covered
They don't do the newsletter.
Okay.
Do it in
I understand that.
And Lisa Taylor actually asked Kathy and Kathy said, yes, I am capable of doing it. They do 90% of the newsletter anyway.
So, so anyway, so do you, do you propose on, on the newsletter that, that likely go to to like a postcard type of thing and use the postage?
I, I think there was, I think, I think it's a misunderstanding. I think we are going to continue with the new thing. Yeah, we're not getting rid of the newsletter.
Okay.
What the IT guy was saying is we're going to propose a project where he can do the ICAL or he can do the text messaging to send, let people know that they're the newsletter, they can go to the, to the website, but the newsletter is not going to go away. Our concern is just terminating the contract because our city staff is doing this work.
I'm all right with that. I'm okay, but I'm just making Yeah, notification on, yes. And so on, on the, on the, on the text, and we haven't got to that, that's the next side. But on that text is they're going to notify the people on that text to look on the website for the newsletter. Or will that newsletter, or will that newsletter be in that text itself?
Or, or, you know, I, you know what, I couldn't tell you. I think it's just going to be a text and I think it's going to go that direction.
It is going to have to be a gradual thing, but the first step is eliminating extra costs here that really aren't necessary. And that's really all I'm saying.
I got it. Yeah, we're not, we're not getting rid of them.
Okay.
Okay, guys, do we have a motion approving or renewing the contract? So I guess the motion, if you don't, if you don't want to prove it, we would not renew.
I, I
I don't, I, I, I don't like the way this has been written.
The simplest way is just to say a motion to terminate the contract.
Okay. Thanks, Jason.
No problem.
I make a motion to terminate the contract between the city of Palm Valley and top direct marketing.
Do we have a second? All approve? All opposed? So that passed, terminate the contract. Number 11, discussion, possible action to approve or renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and JR IT Software Solutions LLC, Jesse Rodriguez to provide IT services and website management.
As I told the, well, as I was talking to Jerry there, the IT guy is, he's just providing the same services he provided before. He did put a price on there. The only difference on there is the project that he, that we passed him to do with that. Did I correct Jesse? Am I right on the right track?
Yes.
The microphone, Gil, just a little closer to the microphone. I can't, I'm having trouble hearing you. It's the only, the only, the contract is the same as it was before. He did add some items on, on our, our security with the, the police department and so forth. But there is a, on his contract, there is something on there for the project concerning the newsletter and the text message and so forth. That's the only difference. Am I correct, Jesse?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Yeah, so the, the, the project for the newsletter and the text messaging, that's totally different from the contract that I have with you for the IT services and website management services. That'll be a separate bill for you guys if you decide to do the project. And that has been provided to you as well. And that's a, but it is a different item than the contract. The contract is just for your cybersecurity and your IT and, you know, the, the website management, posting of the agendas and minutes, stuff like that.
Right, we're just ratifying the, a contract, correct, with the basically the same terms with, with new rates as last year?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, correct.
That's what I thought.
First line for, for 3,397, that's, that's a yearly fee? That's a one-time fee. Well, a one-time fee per year? One-time fee, yeah, for a year, okay? No. 3397, 98, that's a one-time fee, right?
Yes, sir, that's a one-time fee.
Do we have a motion on agenda?
We're not ready yet. No, we're not ready yet. And so, and then there's 50, then, then these other items are, are depending on the people that sign up and stuff like that. So that can fluctuate.
Yes, okay.
Fluctuate, okay.
Are, are you trying to approve both contracts or just the one that's being?
He just wanted to ask questions on the project that he had presented, so we're not trying to approve that one. We're just, I was just informing him that he did provide that information concerning the newsletter, but we're just going with his IT website management, so.
Okay. I hadn't fully reviewed the second one because I thought it was for discussion only.
We're good, alright.
So we want to do that.
I make a motion to approve and renew the contract between the city of Palm Valley and JR IT Software Solutions LLC, Jesse Rodriguez to provide IT services and website management services.
I second that motion.
All in favor? All opposed, same sign? Passed. Item 12, or agenda item 12, discussion, possible action to authorize the city's participation enrollment of employees in Texas municipal retirement system.
Eric, we have a 457 within power that, that most of the employees are not signed up with. I believe it's only two, three? Three?
No, we have about six or seven.
Six or seven employees that are enrolled in it. If we go with TMRS, was it, is part of the Texas municipal retirement system? If we go with TMRS, was it uh, is part of the uh Texas Municipal Retirement System? They did provide some options for us here. And um. What it is, is a retirement system versus a four fifty seven. And. We are providing this to the employees, but this will make it a hundred percent participation. And we're looking at plan number two. The reason there's six sheets is that we have a five percent employee deposit rate. A six percent employee deposit rate and a seven percent employee deposit rate, and it gives you the uh. The cost of what is gonna uh. How it's gonna impact the city, the next three pages are for the following year, so if we do not approve it. Uh, or take action on it. That means that uh we will be. If we finally do decide either next month or the following year, we're going to fall into the last three sheets where the actual. Price of the uh, the cost of the city is gonna go up. Because of the uh, they did a actuary calculation and they said that there was several COVID deaths. And so that brought up the price of the retirement system.
Wow.
So I had talked to Sylvia and the cost to the city under a five percent employee deposit rate contribution. Under plan two, which is the cheapest. Which will be a one to one point five to one would cost the city twenty six thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. That's that, that's five percent. Yes, that's five percent.
Thank you, Gilberto, do we have a motion on uh item, agenda item twelve?
Uh, we're currently, uh, we. Didn't, did we uh, do an amendment for this, uh? Did we?
No, we're gonna have to come back with several amendments to this new budget that we're in, and that would be one of them.
Okay.
At the next meeting, we should be able to come back with several budget requests that are necessary.
Okay.
So we would have to do a budget adjustment for the twenty six six fourteen.
So we're tabling this until next meeting.
We can, we we can vote on it. Um, the the cheapest plan is plan one, which is a one to one. Uh, currently, we have a one point two five. Two one with the empower four fifty seven with the employees. With TMRS, the Texas Municipal Retirement System, it'll be a one point five to one. And it'll be at five percent, so it'll be, the cost to the city will be twenty six six fourteen. And this would be an actual retirement system where it doesn't fluctuate with the market, it's what the. The uh employee puts in along with the city, and that way when they retire, there is a uh, a retirement system for them. And they don't have to depend on the market with, like I said, a four fifty seven or a four fifty one.
So Jason, Jason, do we need a motion to table?
We don't need to table, we can vote on it.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on it, and we're still discussing it, and so um, is um. Is this voluntary on each individual employee?
It's not voluntary.
It won't be voluntary. Is it voluntary right now or something like that, or I mean, or or?
It's it's voluntary right now with the four fifty seven they have. It's a, it's a government uh four oh one, so it would be the four fifty seven B, right, or C?
Okay.
I think one of them.
Yes, four fifty seven C.
Is it is um. We're we're not shoving anything down their throat or anything like that, you know what I mean, I I'm just curious because uh. I mean, have have the bulk of the employees not decided uh up until this time not to participate in a uh. In a retirement program and stuff, give?
I think half of the employees uh. Right now are not participating. Uh, I don't know why they don't wanna participate, uh, they have actually no retirement system at all.
No, I understand that, I'm 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 with you there and all that, but I'm just saying, I I mean, do do we uh? Do we have a meeting with with them before we vote on this, or do we we vote on this and then we, well, we need to vote on it now because you're talking about, you know, the the. The rates changing and stuff. And so, so we have a, we have a meeting with uh with all employees and say, this is how it's gonna be from now on, and there'll be a deduction from your paycheck.
We can have a meeting and let them know there'll be.
Because there will be a deduction, am I correct? Along with our participation too, which is generous, but I I just don't.
We're going with the lowest that there's five and six and seven percent, we're gonna go with five percent. Uh, and so TMRS. Has a whole system, uh, there's, he said, about one thousand cities in the state of Texas participate everywhere from. Uh, cities that have five hundred residents to uh the bigger cities, San Antonio and so forth. And so uh. They want, they want all these cities to participate, that way it keeps the cost, it keeps coming down, the more cities that participate, the lower the cost.
Okay, and and so essentially, there'll be uh, you know, like on on social security, it's like seven point six five, let's just say seven and a half. And so there there'll be two thirds of 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 what, of what the uh social security is. And then is is this, does this go into like into into market account or something like that, that that they could be? That they're 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 fun, or is it just on uh uh and they get a certain interest?
They get, they get a certain interest.
Certain, yes.
They get a certain interest with the money you put in, and then the city puts in, and then just builds.
Just just on interest, just not not whether or not the market goes up.
It's not on the stock market.
Yeah, it's not on the stock, not on the stock at all, just on.
Is it, is it, this is a pitching pitching plan sort of tantamount to a teacher's retirement? That'll impact, it'll be in lieu of them contributing to social security, will it not?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they. Have this.
That's social security.
Right, this is a, this is a pitching plan, basically.
Yes.
We want to get Mr. Mills to do a brief summary. Mr. Mills?
Sure.
See if he wants to just opt to this.
Right now? I called him, but he didn't call.
Oh, we knew, we knew.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay.
No, I I I just wanted to understand some question.
So if um. It's so bottom line, it's taken out of their paycheck no matter what.
No matter.
And and it's full time employees.
Full time employees.
Okay, and you said six have are already participating, so how many is that?
And also, so they have empower right now, which is the four fifty seven, TMRS will make uh an adjustment to the amount of years that they put into. And so they will give them a uh a cap and say. You have participated with your four fifty seven, will allow you to start at, say, the eighth year or the ninth year on this pension versus starting at the bottom.
So they don't lose that.
Yes, can can we, I, can we ask Chendo if he wants to, if he wants, if he's got any?
Well, well, because. The four one K will roll over to this.
No, it will not. You still keep it, you don't lose it, you don't lose it, you still keep it.
For us, when when we, because we got older people here, that, I mean, they're really retired, what are they gonna get? Four one Ks, uh, some people already had it before, so that's an advantage for them, what about us? I mean.
What you?
You gotta be a thing, I mean, I mean, you're twenty eight years, I mean, we're really gonna get the type of insurance, I mean, retirement. I mean. Doesn't seem right for us.
I mean, uh, are are you of the same opinion, or or?
No, I'm uh. No, I'm the one that brought it, uh, okay, I brought it. Over different mayors, uh, my biggest uh issue with, because the city never had a a retirement. Right, and we've had the optional four fifty seven that right now, I think about half of the employees are participating in. Uh, and but just to go on what Chendo said, to me, because of the fact he's got two guys at least that are pretty close to retiring. I think that would be an additional incentive to attract. Perspective employees, right? I know, like, City of Harlingen, for example, they had it forever, and then they got rid of it, and they just brought it back a year or two ago. And now they're attracting better officers because they have the PMRs back. Um, because they went to a four one K and that, the the employees, I'm saying officers, employees and like, um. But I think something like this, I I know on my end, me and my four full timers, so it's five of us full time. You know, we're all for it, right, the officers want it, I know there's one other officer that worked at Harlingen that had it. And he'd like to, this would be a continuation for him also, if you could get it, uh, so the, the all the officers were on board as far as the full. Uh, and but I have young guys that would get something out of it.
And you can't exempt a long term employees, it has to be all or nothing?
It's all or nothing, yes, and uh to uh address Chendo, you don't lose your four fifty seven? You still keep that, you'll still have it, you can still.
When will I be able to get it out, I mean, that's.
When you get old like me? Actually, there's a, so on your four fifty seven, there are age limits on it, so you can't, you can withdraw it anytime, but there'll be penalties unless you reach a certain uh. Uh, age.
Fifty nine and a half, I believe.
Uh, yes, and then you won't have any penalties, but you will still have to pay the taxes on it.
Right, yeah, and then also, under the plan that you looked into, they're giving us some kind of service credit, right?
Yes, they're giving you a service credit.
They're giving us a service credit too, and it would be a division to each employee, uh, you know, depending how many, how long we've been here, so. There there's gonna be some benefit to it even. Even through there.
Yeah.
Even for Chendo, so.
Yeah, even for Chendo and for Joe and for Sammy, these guys that have been here for thirty years, there's still gonna be a benefit.
What, um, I I I don't know four fifty seven, I I.
It's a four one K, but the four fifty seven is the government version of four one K.
Oh, just, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Pension plan.
And it is on the mark, on the market.
It is on the market, and that one's on the market.
Yes, yeah, but but what we're, what we're gonna, what we're gonna instigate now will be just.
On the market, okay. So I make a a motion to approve. Uh, the contract with the city, oh, sorry, wrong one. I make a motion to authorize the city's participation and enrollment of employees in the Texas Municipal Retirement System.
All in favor? I I I could, I could.
Yeah.
So can we backtrack and say?
I um, I got locked out, can you guys hear me?
Did you get a second?
Okay, all in favor?
Hold on a second, Eric.
We have to back, we have to backtrack a little bit because of the ordinance that sent likes.
There's, there's more that goes into the motion, am I right?
Right.
Okay.
Adopt the ordinance, authorizing the city's participation, blah, 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 okay. Well, you made it, so.
I make a motion to authorize.
Adopt.
Adopt you. Adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
And authorize the city's participation and enrollment of employees in the Texas Municipal Retirement System.
Is that, is that good, Sylvia?
No.
Okay. Okay, uh, Eric, we got the motion and and uh.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
Yes, I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Uh, gen item thirteen, discussion possible action to authorize David Flynn with Ferris Flynn and Medina LLC. To create a five year capital improvement plan for the City of Palm Valley. The only comment I have on this one is there's no paperwork on it. So I'm just thinking of cost.
What's it gonna cost, David?
David, Ferris Flynn, Medina.
Can you speak louder?
David.
Here, here.
Eric.
Yeah. So, you know, we talked about this last meeting, so um. The biggest cost on this is gonna be doing TV in the sewer line, I don't have that number. You know, my my numbers with my guys, I'm gonna redo the uh. The uh hydraulic model of your water system. It can confirm all the TCU requirements, we did it ten years ago, actually twelve years ago. Do we need to update that? Uh, to to identify the the element storage tank sizing and be part of the report. Um, and then we're gonna identify the other water improvements, we already know what they are, but. We're gonna do some uh dive into figuring out the best way to do it, planning, we do a one year. You know, one year, two year, three year, all the way up to five, the five years is gonna have. Projects you're not gonna do in five years. We'll be able to do it, but it it will identify future stuff in there. Um, but initially, the first year will will be projects you can. Do with current funds or something, we'll be coordinating with you guys on that, but. The, so so my cost is probably thirty thousand, I don't know, I I'm I'm gonna look into that and give you a proposal. But I I still need to get a cost from uh Southern Transluc, who's already been here, helping y'all before, maybe a cost to them do the whole system. So that way we can identify the worst part of your sewer system and systematically things. We're gonna, and the first year we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna. We're gonna get it all identified, but we'll have a, we'll hardly have that as part of the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
So that that could be a fifty thousand dollar number, I don't, I'm just throwing out.
It was, yeah, see. Street, streets too.
Streets to be in there, uh, those. I I had put streets in my suggestion now, unless we're replacing sewer that's in the street. You continue to crack ceiling and and um. Sealing it.
Hatch.
Because that is, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Cost, and you do it every two to three years, you just budget and then just keep going, your streets are. That bad, there's not puddles everywhere, they're not falling apart, they're holding up, they just don't look it, I mean, some people don't like the aesthetics of it, but they're pretty solid. I think you'd be addressing water and sewer, we've already got a range. You know, going. That will be in there, obviously, we've already done all that, but we're gonna. Put that in there as well, so. I will, I'll put together a proposal for soon, then I guess the next meeting, we can discuss the cost and. And it will, it will identify kind of what I've said. Anywhere.
And just that first year, we can, we can do it with the the funds that we have now for some of the stuff that we discussed in that meeting last week, last month.
Correct.
Like, uh.
The sewer problem and the sewer.
Manholes, that's part of the smell, the manholes, we discussed that in our last meeting, you can probably look.
There're gonna be a lot of things, where where he lives, it's kind of uh not by the sewer plant, you're not getting the sewer plant smell at all, um. You know, the house, the house was probably built in the eighties, I don't know, maybe seventies, seventies, seventy. So you could have some cracking in your, in the slab, there's a lot of things, you know, your your feed trap. Is cracked, it's not golden water, and it's, you get the the bad smell, I I'm just going out, there's all kinds of ways it happened. Right, I realize all those uh other things could be factors, but we never experienced, especially when the house is closed, only when we open. When you open it, okay, so it's, so it could be right outside, the the service line going to the street. Is it, is it in the the side, the the window was near the one going to the street? Uh, and then the breeze was blowing that aroma and from uh the direction of it.
That's nor.
South of us, yes.
Oh, they're new, you know, they.
It was well said, aroma.
Then hell, number five.
Anyway, that that's, that's, so I'll, I I would suggest we do a proposal, then you'll have something to look at, we can have discussions.
So the proposal's gonna cost us thirty thousand?
No, 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 the the actual capital improvement plan will cost, that's my best guess.
Okay.
Um, it is, it's man hours, I mean, I can, I can spread out, show you the man hours, just, just my guys. Recreate or or updating that model, running it. Getting cost, um, the stuff we did during that bond thing was, you know, three thousand feet up, kind of, we're just gonna do all this. And here's the numbers we got on our project a year ago. We're gonna dive in, it took more and really. Um. The first year expenditures, we're we're gonna have a lot of back and forth and. How much money you had to spend, and we're gonna work with that, really, and then we're gonna prioritize. Together, we're we're gonna prioritize what projects need to be done, citizens input, whatever, there's a lot of ways you can go there.
Yes.
Alright.
Yes.
Alright, well, we won't, we won't take action on this.
Thank you, thank. Thank you, David, hey, um, I I did, is he not done?
Yes, he's done.
Done.
Alright, I like David because he talks really loud and he's an A and M fan. And I'm deaf and an A and M fan, but hey, guys, I just wanna make one comment here on uh number thirteen. I've only been here, you know, almost four years, but there's never been a plan. And I like plans. I I mean, every business I've run, I've had a plan, right? I, I mean, every business I've run, I've had a plan, right? And fifty years, this city hasn't had any plans. They just kept doing the same thing year after year after year and not investing in infrastructure. And I, you know, I'm a, I, I can't vote, right, but I'm a favor. I'm in favor of a plan. So. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, I, I make a motion to authorize David Flynn with Ferris Flynn and Medina to create a five-year capital improvement plan. For the City of Palm Valley.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor? All opposed? Pass. Okay, consent agenda, anything you guys have any issue with?
Sylvia, can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Sylvia, that mic, that mark gets right into here. So Sylvia, what Sylvia has requested is that. Items D and E be removed from the consent agenda.
C and D, is it C and D?
Did you say D and E? The, the ending, the ending.
D being the financials and E being the budget adjustments that need to be made. They need to be removed from your motion to approve.
Okay.
We'll come back next. At the next meeting.
Alright, okay.
Well, do you want me to? I make a motion that we remove items D and E from the consent agenda. At this time.
I second.
Well, and, but the, and let's, let's go ahead and approve, but, but let's approve this minus those two. Okay, now, all your, all you say, you're alright.
Alright, so. I move that we. Remove items D and E of the consent agenda, but we approve the remaining items on the consent.
I, I, I second that motion.
All approved? All opposed? Alright, guys. Fifty-five minutes, all we need is a motion to adjourn. Can we have a second?
You got it.
All approved? All approved? All opposed. Thank you, guys, and I'm sorry I did this to you, and I, I'm just not, not feeling well. But we're closing, we're closing the meeting.
Everybody have a good evening.